Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special board meeting on April 24, 2024, Beverly Hills Unified School District. To get us started, I'd like to call up Tricia Bassin for the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Perfectly done. May I have Taha Wolf read our mission and vision statement?
Our mission is for educational excellence, and our vision is for our students to realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex and challenging world.
Thank you. And our community pledge by Shahzad Dardashti.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property, by holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times. We will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much. Before I ask for an approval of the agenda, I wanted first of all to say happy Passover to those who celebrate and observe. One thing I read from the New York Times that I thought was very poignant was that with Passover, we are called upon to remember when times were very difficult, and that is, of course, when we were enslaved by evil Egyptians. And often, there are religious sources that call upon us to remember painful times. And the reason why we are to commemorate miserable times and remember them is so that we can grow from them and continue to be sympathetic and empathic to other peoples who are going through very tough times. And I thought that was something that resonated with me. With that, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, we begin with... Who's calling the screen? Okay, we'd like to call Ms. Crane up with her wonderful students for the BBMS Science Olympiad.
Hi, everyone. This is such an awesome way to start a board meeting, so thank you for having us. And I'm just here to turn the spotlight on our students and our community. So, this is the third year in a row that we have made it to the state competition for Science Olympiad. Yeah. This row of students in front of you, I cannot gush enough. This is the most outstanding group of students. So, Science Olympiad is a very rigorous national competition where students build engineering. They have subject area tests that are insane. They're college-level. And our students rise every single time outside of school they give their time for this. And we went to regionals, where we dominated. And from there, we went on to state, which was at Caltech over spring break. Just being at Caltech, just being in that environment, you can just feel this electric energy. And the fact that we are there, again, these students blow me away. They got to take tours of Caltech. They got to see a future if they continue this path that is theirs. And I just want to brag on Beverly Hills. So, we have Science Olympiad in the elementary level, and they won. There's no state level for elementary, so they won as far as they could at the elementary level. We have our middle school team, and we build to a high school team. And I cannot wait for the day that we make it to nationals, because that is going to happen. This group of students is going to build and keep this pathway going and going and going. So, while I have the spotlight, and you guys have to listen to me, I also want to turn the spotlight on our parent coaches. This job is bigger than any teacher could take on. I am not an expert in ornithology or aerodynamics, or was it forestry this year? We had forestry? I confuse the years. So, what happens is the students are assigned a parent coach, and that coach takes over meeting with them outside of school. They have rigorous tests. They look up materials. They become the expert for that area. And we're so lucky in Beverly Hills, we have so many subject area experts. Like, it's so phenomenal. And what's starting to happen, what I'm seeing, is this culture where parents are training the next generation to take over the events as they go on to high school, et cetera. And like, that's what we want. We want that continuity. So, I want to shine this on the parents who are here, too. This team is not possible without a full community effort. Ms. Langivan and I are just there to shepherd the process. They're the ones who do the hard work in the trenches. And I cannot stand here and not shine this specifically on Claire Dardashti. No, seriously. This team... Everybody, every teacher should be so lucky to have a parent like that in their corner. Seriously. Like, I could not do this any other way. And as you guys know, I was on maternity leave for almost the whole past year. So, really, this spotlight is also for Ms. Langivan, who we share this role. The mark of a good program, to me, is if I step out, it continues and thrives.
That's true.
I am not this program. Like, this program is them. It is this institutional knowledge that we have now. And so, again, I stand here three years in with this phenomenal team, and I know we're going to make it to nationals soon, right? Like, this is super cool. So, anyways, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Langivan to introduce the students, and they brought some of their projects to show you guys, too. And yeah, you guys rock.
All right, I'm going to start by introducing our students. I'll start from all the way at the very end with Suri. Suri is a sixth grader. We have Sydney next to her. You guys can raise your hands, give a little wave. I have sixth grade, sixth grade Ella next to them, sixth grade. We have Kelsey, sixth grade. Tricia, eighth grade. Tayja, eighth grade. Shahzad, eighth grade. Karish, fifth grade. I almost said eighth grade. Promoted. Taryn is seventh grade. Aiden, we have seventh grade. Luca, seventh grade. And Leanna, we have seventh grade. We are missing a few students that weren't able to make it today. Our total team is 15 students with two alternates. Some of our students that are here stepped up and filled in for those positions during our state competition. So, since the state competition was during our spring break, there were a few students that weren't able to attend. So, throughout the year, we have students that learn the builds, learn the events, and then they can step in during those competitions later on. So, we have an amazing group of kids that were competing at both competitions or competing at one or the other. And I know there's some that have some great projects to show you guys. There is... You guys want to show your flight vehicle? So, Shahzad and Karish, are you going to show it as well? Or is he just holding it?
Shahzad, you're welcome. Come back over here.
Yeah, you want to come up here and use the mic?
Can you also fly it? Uh, not in here.
It flies very well.
So, this was for the flight event, and all it is, is like, it's a rubber-motored airplane. So, there's a propeller here. And every year, there's like different rules for it. Like, I could only use a specific amount of grams of rubber to fly it or something. And the whole point is just like keeping it in the air as long as possible. And at our regionals, I'm pretty sure we got like a minute 43 seconds, which was very good for the amount of rubber that we were allowed to use. Yeah.
How did you launch it? Like, from like deck E or up there?
Suddenly, I would throw, and it would climb up.
Oh, okay. So, not from a height? You didn't... And that's balsa wood and...
That's longer than some Alaska Airlines flights.
That's right. That's for sure.
That's why we need good engineers.
The door come off mid-flight on this one?
It makes the better engineers for the world.
Yeah. Can you also share with us? I always try to bring math back home to us. Can you, any of the kids or Ms. Crane, talk about some of the math that was used for this project?
So, I always say, when we're doing anything engineering, this is why I love the M part of STEM. So, oftentimes, they'll get to the end, and they'll be like, where's the math? And I'm like, you did it all along. When you're, you know, she mentioned how many grams this is. It can't go over certain weight.
Right, so the weight had to be...
Yeah, so I always say they're doing ninja math. Like, they don't realize they're doing math because they're so caught up in the fun. But of course, it's math. A good engineer is fluent in the language of mathematics. But you're not sitting there, you know, doing a problem. They're building a thing. So, they may not be able to tell you per se what they did, but it's that tactile piece. So, one of the projects was... Are they here with the... Not air trajectory, the one that has this... Thank you, roller coaster. Sorry, mom brain. Roller coaster. So, they have to build something, and they have to put it at a specific angle, and they have to decide how long they're going to keep a marble going. And again, they may not be able to tell you the formula for something, but they're doing it. So, that piece is being built, and that piece of the math brain is being built, which is like, I think, the powerful piece of STEM. One of the events also is coding, which is math. You know, it's the logic piece of that. So, they're building that in. So, that's again why I love... I'm glad you brought up the math. It's the applied math piece. So, they're doing it without even realizing they're doing it.
Okay.
Do we have any of our other projects? Anyone else want to talk about their cool stuff?
Okay, should we go around? Any comments from board members? Sophia?
Thank you, Ms. Crane and Ms. Langivan, and all of you guys for coming in today and presenting. I mean, first of all, just because I see it, I'm loving the merch. Like, I've never seen... This is awesome. I love our branding. And I'm so excited. Yeah, completely. Shout out PTA. I'm just so excited that we have this opportunity now at the middle school level for all our kids. And did you say you had a fifth-grade student even lower?
Yeah, so, the team for the middle school level can actually have up fifth through ninth. So, when we lost some of our students to spring break, the coolest thing is, we brought a couple of ninth graders back who had been on the team all three years in middle school, and they subbed for the students who couldn't make it because they were part of the team again. So, it was really cool. They had competed at the high school level, and then we brought them back to be our teammates again.
That is so cool. I love the fluidity of the program. And I'm just so excited because I think this is obviously a great setup for kids who want to continue Science Olympiad later at the high school. So, yeah, thank you all for coming in. This is awesome.
Also, I'm going to just like comment on something you said. It's the middle school. Like, we were able to do this because we have this robust middle school now. I didn't do this when I was at Hawthorne. When we were at the K8s, I didn't have the team. Now I do.
Great. And I like that you pulled from... There were six, seventh, and eighth graders represented, and they were all able to work together.
Yeah, and the idea is the eighth graders pass on the knowledge to the sixth graders. So, the sixth graders are more likely to be alternates so that the next year, they can compete. So, the idea is to build this nice mentoring thing with the parent coaches, too. Because again, this is bigger than any one person could take on.
And most of our sixth graders were on the fifth-grade team.
Oh, neat continuity.
Yep, pathway.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you all, thank you. And the gentleman that just came in, if you want to acknowledge him, so he gets a shout out.
Ben Ohana.
Welcome.
Welcome, Ben.
He was on the roller coaster thing that we just talked about. And his older brother was also on our team and is now on robotics.
I think these are the things that we do in our formative years here that actually do last with us for the rest of our lives. You will remember these kind of things. Most of our basic core classes come and go through our brains, but these things, especially because of the tactile element, are definitely going to stay imprinted in you. It's great to see you guys that build a bench. I think that's terrific, that you kind of guarantee the program continues with continuity, and that you're sending some great minds up to the high school. It's terrific. Thank you all. Thank you.
Ms. Manishari?
Thank you all for being here. Not too much to add, other than my favorite part of these board meetings is when the students and the teachers come and join us and share what's really happening. So, thank you for taking the time to be here with us and hope to see you guys again.
Okay, Ms. Marcus?
Congratulations, guys. I'm really proud of you. And thank you for coming tonight and sharing all of this with you, with me and the board. I just want to say that I know that it's a rigorous program that you go through, and that what's nice about it, many of you started in the elementary school and now continuing in the middle school. And I was sort of listening to the numbers that they called out, and many of you are sixth and seventh graders. So, I know that many of you are going to be back next year, I hope, and we'll see you again, and you will go on to the national. I keep my fingers crossed for you. But thank you for coming and sharing with us, and I think I can only say, we should be so proud of you, and you should be very proud of yourselves. So, thank you.
Congratulations again. And with that, we thank you. So, a round of applause again for our scientists.
I'm going to borrow the microphone, since it helps me project. I want my team to... Can we do a photo? Sure. Is that okay? Can we do a photo with you guys?
Sure.
And then I wanted to take them up to the robotics lab.
No, I think that's great. I just want to offer my congratulations really quick. And then I also want to say, like, I really appreciate what you said about the exploratory learning and that culture. Because what you said, Ms. Crane, is so pivotal to what we're doing in our schools. And when you explained the experience before labeling something, you know, like, that was really clear, what you said, and that's what we strive in all of our classrooms, is get in there, manipulate. You know, it's all tactile. It's explore. You know, it's take risks, and then figure out what it is that you're doing, instead of the opposite, which is memorize this formula, because that isn't mastery. So, I love what you said.
Okay, so picture all of us real quick.
Is that okay?
All right.
We usually do it like right here, so we move our chair. We could do it like...
Yeah. Sit down, Ms. Marcus.
Ms. Marcus, you want to sit here and...
Oh, we got our roller coaster. We brought the roller coaster. Can we show that off?
Yeah.
Take a picture, too.
So proud of this roller coaster, guys. They got multiple 3D printers for this.
That's a marble? Did you take it? No?
I might have a marble in my purse.
I might have a marble in my purse. Tell me you're a science teacher.
I was going to say, I might as well. Confiscating.
Because one time, I removed the marbles.
I know that.
Dang it, I've got so many marbles.
They have a tic-tac.
I keep a little stack of those.
Drop a tic-tac, see what happens. Okay.
I literally, I think they're in the pocket of my...
I think we have hundreds of marbles.
We don't have a marble?
I normally have one in... Well, because we're building roller coasters. It's a weird thing to have one in one's purse.
So, I would like to be able to do it.
They work so hard on this.
This is the roller coaster one?
My husband got selected in the honors, too. He's eighth grader or seventh grader? Seventh.
Seventh grader.
But his older brother was on this, so they've been doing these engineering builds for years now. They built it before. Yeah, and they do a bunch of sessions. So, all the parents who are coaches, they have the students come over, and they put a lot of time.
Yeah. Okay, let's... Yeah, guys, kids, come over here.
Hey, students, can you mind coming over here? Team, thank you, guys. Over here.
How about some of you come around the back and go to this other side? And then just around. Go to the other side. Kind of get up close.
Thanks, Mom. I know. It's okay. But I think you can imagine what it would be like.
Are you guys taking flight in space? You should take flight in space.
I put it first.
Yes, come on in. Come on in. You guys can come up here.
And switch in.
Couple rows here.
And look, they will bite.
There you go. There you go. Good, good, good. That's fine. It's okay. Shall we bring our parent coaches? Find your window. Okay, on the count of three.
Can everyone squeeze in?
Come, 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 come. Perfect person. Ready? One... Irene, come. I'm good. Irene, come. One, two. We have Irene.
What are we looking at, folks?
Somebody.
We'll look at Jill. Jill, wave your hands, so we can all look at you. Everyone look at Jill. Ready, one, two, three. Okay. Thank you. I want...
All right, let's go up to the robotics lab.
Sorry, your plane crashed.
Do actual classes go on here? Like, where are the actual classes?
Other kids missed it, too. Unbelievable. Thank you so much for everything. No, thank you.
So, they say that Suri broke it in the last minute. See, the second three, we both...
So, they are... The party? Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for getting...
Congratulations. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Ms. Lemon.
Yeah, go ahead. We have Principal Scon, who's going to share a few words of gratitude.
I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Mr. Ellis for helping the team find their spaces for practicing, the horseman gym, getting the security there so that they had the time and the places to get their projects done. And then also, a huge shout out to BHF and PTA. All the extras, the fun things, these are the things that they help to fund. And so, this is just a come-to-life moment for all of the hard work that our BHF and PTA do for their fundraising. So, a huge shout out to them for supporting this program. It means a lot to our teachers and to our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda is public comment, and we would like to call upon Yumi King. Yes, please, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. Today, I stand before you not only as a concerned parent, but also as an advocate for flexibility, understanding in our education system. The senior class of this year, including my son, had proudly overcome unprecedented challenges due to the pandemic. Notably, they had to celebrate their middle school graduation with a drive-through, and now they are approaching their proper high school graduation. For them, this is the once-in-a-life chance to experience a traditional graduation celebration. Regrettably, the strict adherence to the no-exception graduation speech submission deadline has inadvertently penalized the students, including my son. He missed the discrusher cutoff because a single email notification was sent just before spring break without any subsequent reminders. Overwhelmed by his rigorous academic and extracurricular schedule, he failed to check this and consequently did not submit his speech on time. This oversight led to a profound mental health crisis. I received a distressing call from the school informing me that he was in such a desperate, and he mentioned thoughts about suicide. I have always respected and appreciated the tradition upheld by our district and acknowledged the dedication of a principal and superintendent to maintain these traditions. However, I believe that granting mercy to this year graduates who could not celebrate their middle school graduation traditionally due to the pandemic does not undermine our traditions, but rather enhances them. This approach addressed an extraordinary situation and embodies a commitment to prioritizing what is best for the students, fulfilling our duty to uphold students' first value in our decisions. Therefore, I'm requesting a grace period for the submission of graduation speeches. This grace period would allow students who missed the deadline due to the extenuating circumstances to still participate. Implementing this measure would not only rectify and administrate oversight, but would also demonstrate our commitment to the mental health and overwhelming of our students, ensuring that no one loses a once-in-a-life opportunity and face lifelong regret due to a single oversight. Let's remember that education is not just about maintaining tradition or following rigid protocols. protocols. It's about adoption to needs of our students and preparing them for the future with compassion and understanding. A grace period in its instance is a reasonable and just measure that reflects the value we aspire and instill in our community. Thank you for considering this important matter. I look forward to your supportive decisions that acknowledge the needs of our all students, ensuring no one is left to be harmed due to a mere oversight.
Good timing. Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving along to the consent calendar. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent calendar minus item nine, or five F?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item five F.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the BHF additional naming opportunities at El Rodeo for discussion purposes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Marcus. Discussion?
Yes, thank you so much. Hi, thank you for joining us, sure. So I just wanted to make sure that we all were really putting eyes on the BHF naming list for El Rodeo. I wasn't 100% sure, so thank you so much for joining us. I see the the approved price list that we previously discussed, and that, all those pieces are for 25 years, right? Yes. So then I was not sure if the the new set is also for 25 years? Yes. Okay, got you. And then the the tree at the bottom of the first list, right above where the yellow starts, what's the difference between the tree with botanical name, date planted, and donor name as opposed to the large tree in front of the school? And sorry if you don't know it, I don't expect you to, you know, know the property in and out.
I did some homework. Thank you. So my understanding is that there is a large, beautiful magnolia tree that is kind of front and center and kind of spectacular. So that's the, that is the large tree in front of the school.
Got you. I had a couple.
I'm sorry, Jill, are the other trees, sorry, are the other trees to be planted, or have they been planted?
They exist.
They exist, okay.
They're like more petite as compared to that one.
And slight, maybe slightly less prominent.
Got you. So, and then the range of 1,000 to 5,000, is that just because you guys don't know where it's gonna land? Or is there one that's 1,000, one that's 5,000? Do you know what the the range for the previous batch is about?
I think location and maybe size of tree.
Okay. So I'll tell you just what I'm thinking. So now that we're we're moving forward with more, I was wondering what the board thinks, and of course, what you think as well in BHF. With each seat going for 10 years at 1,500, do we think that the trees for 25 years should be longer? The the mini trees? Like, I'm sorry, higher?
Higher in price.
Yes. So that's, so that's one thing that I'm suggesting, is that since we're giving each seat, so the chart also needs to be modified to reflect that the auditorium seats, as per the last meeting, we approved for 10-year contracts. And if I remember correctly, the mindset there was that, for example, if you have a TKer, and then maybe a couple of years later, you have then a first grader and a TKer, for the 10 years that your family is at El Rodeo, you'd get your seats. And then the family moves on, and so then the seats become available to new TK families. So the mindset there makes sense to me. But now that we did that there, I was thinking maybe we need to rethink the mini trees to maybe start at 5K, because they're going for 25 years. What do you guys think?
I think the history of donations in this city would, the realism of it is that you're lucky to get one. So for a tree, you know, buildings, classrooms, seats, classrooms, you'll probably get those donations. Half a million dollars for buildings, very unlikely, just to be realistic. Right, but but you should have it, you should offer it, it's fine. The tree, I mean, if you want to start at, you know, a two instead of one, that's that's fine, I I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I, you know, I I hope, I hope they get whatever they ask for.
Me too. How about you guys? Are you?
I would tend to agree.
2,500 as a starting point for 25 years?
Tell me, if I'm wrong, 2,500 is the seats, right? 2,500?
1,500 is a seat.
Sorry, 1,500 seats.
1,500 for the seats for a 10-year duration? And so then, as a result, I was thinking of bumping up the trees a little bit, so.
But would that be 25?
What if the tree dies?
You mean 25 years?
Yeah. Right now, it's under the 25 years. Does it stay under the 25 years? Because I'd be okay bumping it up if you're gonna keep it 25 years, if you're gonna bump it up and just reduce it to 10.
No, I agree. Since it's gonna be 25, I think we should start at 2,500.
I can honor that, yeah.
So then maybe those trees go somewhere from a 2,500 to a 7,500 range, something like that? What do you think, Dr. Brady?
So I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing, so that it's the tree with the botanical name?
Yes, sir.
Date, okay. I mean, I I think that it's all pretty subjective, you know, as far as, I like the way that we're thinking as far as, you know, the looking at the age span of a child, like that hasn't been done before, so I really like that. But I, you can kind of apply that to everything, so we've got a lot of trees, so so I'm not, you know, if if our goal is to try to get, you know, more more people to donate, I don't know if that puts people out of that range or not. But I don't think that it's that much more.
Okay.
I I think because of the nature of the naming with the, as opposed to a little plaque on a seat, it's gonna be a more substantial plaque, I assume, for the trees. I, the thing I question is why the range? If you're gonna list 2,500, somebody's gonna, why would they pay five for a tree if they can get it for 25?
I think they have maybe different visibility.
You can always, I mean, if that, is that what it means? Subject to?
Is it a different plaque?
Right.
If you spend the high end of that range?
No, it's it's the same plaque, but it's it's a different species or size of tree and location.
Got it.
So the range is, then that should be specified.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're right, otherwise someone will say.
Okay, so what range, but what range do we want to give?
I don't like comments.
And Jill, I welcome your comment, like if you think 2,500 is an okay starting point, given we want to make sure that the seats sell and that people don't start going for the trees in lieu of the seats, which the seats were intended to be like a baseline opportunity.
I also think, though, can I just say that?
Please.
That sometimes when when trees become the donation, it's oftentimes a memorial. So it's oftentimes like we want, you know, people want to watch it grow, and you can you can bring your family, it's so much different than the seat where, you know, you really don't have access.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just a little bit different. I think you get a different donor. You know, that's going to be.
I would like to just make a comment about that. A tree is outdoors and a plaque is there and it's visible, so people are going to see it. In the auditorium, you know, people are not gonna see it all the time, but you know, when you walk up to the school or you're walking by, and there's a plaque there, you're gonna see it. And I think it has a lot more, for me, it would be a meaningful type of plaque that, like for some real, like donation for a memorial or in honor of a teacher or so on. So I honestly feel that we're starting below what we are doing the auditorium seats for. I really think we should be at that level or above it, that would be the only thing. In other words, make it $2,000 or something that makes it a little bit more, because it's always gonna be there more visible than the other.
And it's for a longer term.
Well, yeah, that's also true, yeah, it's longer term. So I honestly feel that if I were to have planted a tree in memory of somebody, I it's gonna be there for for a long time, 25 years as we're talking about, but it's something you're gonna be able to see, you don't have to go open the auditorium and go look in and find it, you know, it's gonna be out there for everybody to see.
So what price are you comfortable with? So what price would you be comfortable with then for the?
I would be, I would have to be comfortable with a price that's more than $1,000 for a tree, that, because we're doing the seats in the auditorium for 1,500.
Right.
I would like to see it a little bit higher. That's, it doesn't have to be a lot higher, but I think it should be a little bit higher.
How about 2,500? So then, then, and what do we want to do as the?
I don't like the idea, I think it should be one price. I mean, you know, you're gonna plant a tree and.
But they're different trees. They have different visibilities and different sizes.
Right, so there is a range.
We don't say that in here, we just say that it's a range.
But they will.
We're gonna specify, we're asking for illumination of that. All right, so should I say sold?
So should we say 2,500 to 7,500 depending on?
And if you could specify the gradation of that, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that good?
No, I I I like to stay with 5,000. I think that we need to think about if we're gonna get them, and I'm not sure. I personally want to make it possible for people to get them. If you start raising the prices, you might not get them. So I, 2,500 to 5,000 would be my idea, but.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So then now, moving back up our chart to the buildings, just like with the trees, you suggested that there's variation of size, visibility, and so on. So, like, for example, is one of the signs of one of the buildings gonna be along Wiltshire Boulevard? Is that the same value that the other buildings are having? I'm just asking, do we want to differentiate among the buildings? I mean, the buildings are all very uniquely situated.
Yeah, no, that's that's a really good point. I actually am not sure entirely where the signage is gonna go. I don't know if that's a city issue.
Yeah, I I don't think because of the nature of that particular part of Wiltshire, people are gonna be stopping to reading the sign on the Wiltshire side. I think it'll be, go where people who are in campus can read the sign more easily.
I hear you.
And therefore, almost anything falls into the same category, because the setback of the school is far away from Whittier. So I think all the signage is is really gonna sit, I mean, all the buildings kind of sit at the same.
They're apples to apples.
Yeah, I believe there are. I don't, you know, maybe the only one that might be different is the auditorium, but you priced it higher, so.
Yeah.
But then then you price the auditorium and building A, you know, and which says auditorium. So I just.
Yeah, I noticed that too. So so building A seems to have three pieces to the puzzle.
Right.
Which is the building A, which is 500,000, the auditorium, which is 1 million, and then the stage, which is 50,000.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I think we're talking numbers at this point that are gonna be harder to come by, the stage probably not, somebody may grab the stage. But I, how do you differentiate between auditorium and building A?
Yeah, I'm confused.
That's what I'm confused about.
But we, but even, for example, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but even at Horace Mann, for example, the auditorium is the Ron Brown Auditorium, but the stage?
Is LeBeau.
Is a Michael LeBeau. And I can't recall, but is there a, where is the sign indicating it's the Michael LeBeau?
Inside.
It's inside.
You can't miss it.
Yeah, you can't miss it, yeah. Well, that's good to know. That's good to know. And that's in perpetuity, right?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that is a good question. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah. So the stage, so what do we all think about the stage? Are we now looking back, are we fine with the stage at 50K? You think, let's just take what we can get?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are we feeling like the million dollars for the auditorium is attainable, given the excitement around El Rodeo, or is that a time will tell?
I, well, what I would say is, I think it should be a million dollars for that building. There's not a building A and an auditorium. I don't know what, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the auditorium is the majority of the building, right? I know there's the balcony and some stuff right outside the balcony, but it's basically, and that's why you have it differentiated as building A, but I don't think it's necessary. I just think building A, because it's the auditorium, should go for a million, and the other buildings are half a million, so.
Well, one thing, to your point, one thing that we could do if it, if you really want to, is we could take building A off the menu, sell the auditorium, which is in building A, sell the stage, which is in building A, but then also come back and sell building A later if we have the demand, is that we?
Well, I think if I were gonna donate, you know, if I were Warren Buffett for a day, and I were gonna donate, and I saw, well, I can have a plaque on the outside of the building for a half a million, or a plaque on the inside for a million, you're not gonna get the million from me, you're gonna get the half a million, and I'll take the plaque on the outside, because I don't care whether people, everybody that comes in there is most likely going into the auditorium. So it doesn't matter to me. So I just think strategically, if you water it down and there's too many options, you're not gonna get what you want. So that's that's just my instinct on this.
That's fine.
Like, and I don't work in these circles that I know what millionaires do with their money, just to know, but it would be my, like I said, after years of watching these donations in this in this school district, where things kind of go.
Pam, did Pam have something?
I wanted to remark that the motion on the floor is to approve the additional naming. We should not be talking about the white part, because that's already been, you've already voted on that. This this motion is to vote on everything else that you know. Just to.
Yeah.
Because you're now trying to get out lots of monies, but that's already been, even your trees have already been voted on. So this motion is just for all the new.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
Right.
It's good, it's good to circle, circle it all back at some point, just because then we did something a little more unique with the auditorium seats, so we just want to make sure it's cohesive.
Okay, well, with that, should we?
I just want to make one motion, I want to comment about this. I was looking at what is called the soccer field, and I would like to make a comment about the soccer field. That soccer field would not, we really should somehow, and this is something we can think about later, but AYSO is giving $350,000 for that soccer field. And I'm wondering, wow, we're going to let them, the world know that they had such a big part in this. So I just like to make that comment right now, because I see it on here for $250,000, and yet AYSO gave us $350,000 to do that field, and I think that we need to make some recognition of that. So that's my comment.
It's good to be reminded of.
And thank you. So we are in discussions about what that's going to look like as far as a recommendation to the board. We've started those conversations already.
Well, it sounds like we have some unfinished commentary about this, so we can circle back, but at this point, we should probably just vote on.
We should vote on the item on the calendar, and then ask for the other parts to come back, so we can make those amendments.
Great. Thank you.
So with that, all in favor?
No, are we tabling that most, that one, or are we taking it as it is?
No, because like, like Ms. Crosshauer said, we're only voting on the bottom part here.
The yellow.
But our discussion is rooted in the top part, so that's what we want the BHF to bring back, so we can amend it with them. They've heard our notes, I think they can bring back as an amended price list for that. So we're not even voting on that, so we can approve the, nobody seemed to have issues with the bottom part, so we can approve those.
Approving the bottom part.
Yes. My only point of clarification on the bottom part was that it's for 25 years. And so then they'll all go under the 25-year chart. Thank you.
With the exception of the auditorium.
Except for the seats, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we are moving to reports. Student board member report. Okay, just give it a sec to load here. All righty, okay. Good evening to you all. I want to start off by saying happy Passover, hugs to everyone celebrating this and next week. Yeah, a great holiday and uniquely reflective this year, I think, so, yeah, wishing everyone a great Passover and Seder, if you already had.
Thank you, same to you.
Thank you. Okay. Getting into it, it's obviously been a bit longer since our last one, so I want to start off, as always, with an athletic note, since some of, most of our spring sports now are
so I want to start off as always with an athletic note, since some of, most of our spring sports now are actually wrapping up. Um, so CIF-wise, on the left-hand side here, we got the amazing news this past couple of weeks with that the boys volleyball team are our Ocean Lake Champions. So cool. Yeah, and they'll be playing tomorrow now in Southern Section Finals. And then on the right-hand side is shown our track team from their senior night this last week. This entire week, they've been competing in Ocean Lake Finals. And yeah, we're wishing them the best as they go on Friday to finish off varsity finals. So, yeah, very exciting. Okay, um, this has been a particularly artistic and creative last couple of weeks since the last meeting. As you can see here, I have photos from both our high school and middle school art shows, which both are still taking place, starting last week and wrapping up both tomorrow, I believe. Um, just so impressive. If you haven't already gone, I highly recommend going and checking out some of the artwork our students have. Again, from photography to sculpture, painting, all sorts of visual arts. Just as always, a great reflection of our visual arts program and that pathway that we have available to students. So impressive, a lot of the art and a lot of themes that I think they cover. It's just really, really profound and mature. Just absolutely a blast if you haven't gone, so highly recommend it. Uh, next up, the past couple of weeks, we've been dealing with state testing. And one of the most innovative, like impressive things I think I've ever seen as a response to state testing laws has been our Casp Carnival put on for the first year ever by our high school PTA. This was an, yeah, absolutely. Oh my gosh, yes. Absolutely. I think for years now, we, as a collective, interesting. I think for years now, as a collective, we've been dealing with trying to sort of generate ways to excite and incentivize our students to do better on state testing. And this was, hopefully, an absolute success. Like, this was so impressive of them. I think the students really enjoyed the opportunity to sort of relax because it came with a unique schedule. So it was just a really calm day, I think, that really re-energized them, especially since we're continuing testing now, going into finals and APs. Just, I think, an absolute standout of an event. Okay, speaking of again, um, at, since we're approaching the end of the year now, we have a lot of our awards, um, as well as testing periods, like wrapping up and coming to a close. And these are some photos from last week's Career and Technical Education Awards, which highlighted the accomplishments of our students at the high school who have completed a career and technical education pathway in any of our CTE classes for, I believe, all four years. Just so impressive. I, like, I'm sorry, it's really repetitive to say, but our students are just so amazing and impressive, genuinely. Um, the range here, as I look at these photos also, is so, um, just so amazing. Like, in terms of DECA and like fashion and robotics and all of it. Just so cool and such an amazing accomplishment that I think is also really important to award since a lot of these programs are electives and can seem less important or less rigorous, but absolutely like reflects the same level of like commitment and just dedication to craft and like developing a skill as a lot of the stuff that our students are doing in their regular core four classes. So yeah, really, really happy for all these people. Okay, and then I believe finishing up here, last, this weekend, the high school theater department, sorry, wrapped up their final performance of the year, which was the Pirates of Penzance, just in collaboration, obviously, with our orchestra and symphonic orchestra, I believe. Just such an impressive event. I'm sorry, there's no better word for it. Um, yeah, it was, I hope you guys got the opportunity to see it. It was so unique, I think, in the material it covered. It was, if you didn't go, it was like sort of an operatic comedic performance, which is pretty subversive, I think, from the stuff our Spring Musical especially typically covers. But like nonetheless, completely consistent in terms of quality and talent on display. I was so astounded by the operatic skills of some of our students up there, as well as always just looking down to the band and orchestra in the pit, playing along like, like beat for beat to everything they were singing up on the stage. So impressive and such a highlight, um, event for the end of the year. And I believe, oh no, upcoming, obviously. Um, as we speak, I believe, we have students outside preparing for our annual Coffee House event, where students and performers from our vocal music programs get the opportunity to sing some songs and just put on performances outside of the curriculum, more tunes, too, I believe, whatever they want to do, which is so fun and very conveniently located for us right now. So I'm, we'll be checking that out personally, I think, if we wrap up in time. Um, yeah, an amazing event, Coffee House. And then on the right here, tomorrow night, we have French Cabaret, sort of of a similar ilk in terms of the performances and a great, um, event in terms of incorporating our French program in our linguistic department, in a performance more accessible event. So yeah, highly recommend checking both of these out. And that, I believe, wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go around. Comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Ms. Sherry, comments about the report?
No, I really appreciate your comments, and I couldn't agree with you more. You're using the words impressed and astounding, and I use them a lot when, you know, that's what I'm thinking when I leave various events as well. So I'm on your page and wholeheartedly agree, and it's amazing to see.
Completely.
Well, I want to tell you that not only the performance by the, the acting and the singing and so on, but the staging, the scenery, the sets were amazing. I really, it was.
Absolutely.
You have to, when you talk about putting that production together, it's everything. And I got to tell you, it was so professional and so wonderful. And I really, I always look forward to it every year, and I'm looking forward to next year because I know it'll be just, I don't know if she's going to top it, but.
No, completely, such a visual feast.
It was wonderful, and I am hoping to enjoy, I always go to Cabaret Night. I love that. And then French treats and so on. And then they have a little silent auction and.
Exactly, yeah, to raise money, yeah.
So I think we tried to beat each other last year in that.
I think you beat me hands down in most things, Rasham. I hope you, you enjoyed those winnings while I sat home with nothing French.
Nothing French, okay.
Okay, anyway, thank you for that very complete report. I really enjoyed it, and thank you again.
Thank you.
I also had the pleasure of going to the musical, the Pirates of Penzance, and it was, it was incredible. I mean, it really, to me, I can't see how a high school-level performance could be any better than it was on every level. And of course, not only were the families and parents who supported these performers, but also the professional help and Ethan Smith, Justin Klotzel, I don't want to leave anyone out, but there's a lot of players that absolutely worked overtime, weekends, whatever, to get this done. So I don't ever want to hear anyone say, teachers, they're off all summer and they're off during the weekend. No, no, no. In order to get this to the excellence we saw, that was true, truly committed, intense work and a lot of talent. And also, it was Old English, or it was another kind of English and opera. So I mean, this was not just memorizing lines.
It's actually Oxonian English. Victorian is Oxonian English it's referring to.
I mean, I was lost the whole time anyway, but I mean, I really enjoyed it, and I could tell the kids had fun. And I know that on the final day, they had a matinee, and then they had to turn around and do one at night, so they were all kept strategically in the building so no one would say they were stuck in traffic. And I thought that was very smart.
Yeah.
I also went to the art show, and I thought that was amazing. Um, I, I know that there, you know, there were some issues and some viewers were upset with, with some of the things that were seen. I just want to say that, you know, art often provokes, and it does stir you. It can make you angry. It can upset you. We don't want to cause that. We want peace, but in order for our brains as humans to expand, sometimes we do things that do provoke and cause anxiety. And I think that it's just part of being an artist, but doesn't mean we don't have to take measures to reel certain things in. But I do, I want to commemorate all of those artists who took risks to, to represent certain viewpoints, you know, that aren't popular. And I just saw a lot of talent, so thank you. Okay, with that, we have Dr. Bregge's superintendent report.
Yes, and I want to say also, the best part of my job is having the opportunity to go to all of these events. And I, we've never seen a board member that goes to as many as our board to these events, as well as a student board member, where I run into you everywhere, Sophia. So like, thank you for that. In fact, we'll have a couple of repeats in my presentation, so I'll go through them pretty quickly as they've been mentioned. And while that's loading, I also want to say that this is that time of year where, you know, what's happening, you know, as we speak, for the rest of the year, the five weeks that we have left, there's, there's multiple events every night. Sometimes two and three different events. So we try to get to everything, and we'll report on as many things as we can, we can get to. Also want to extend a happy Passover, and as we're completing a round of holidays for all of our families, we try to celebrate and recognize every holiday to represent our community. Um, just quickly again with the, the art shows, I can't say enough about, and Sophia said it best when she talked about the pathways, because that, I've been in school districts where that art education, that foundational perspective is not there in your K through fives, and that foundational level starts at your middle schools. Uh, there is a very big difference to the quality that we see in our art, and it's because it starts in our elementary schools with our art teachers that we get to the level that they're at now, to where they actually are creating portfolios for, for college in art. Uh, we had a great trip just recently that I want to mention, which is called Coast to Coast. It's by the California School Board Association. And Ms. Starkins, Mr. Margot and I, this is the second year in a row that we attended. And what I really like about this particular trip was, last year, we talked with our lawmakers about special education funding, which was very, very important to us in every school district. But this really had a tangible perspective for us this year in talking about the unregulated AI issues that are popping up all over the place. Um, I could make a full-time job out of being asked to be part of newscasts and podcasts, radio shows, because people really want to tap into us about what, the way that we handled this. Uh, we had a great article that was, you know, the, the subject area is not great, but getting the word out that we're being proactive, that's what our community wants to see, is that we are not just admiring the problem as it's popping up in every school district. We're really talking with the people that can make the difference. And that is through our senators and our House of Representatives, that we were able to speak to over 60 different offices. Um, we hit the ground running. Uh, I, I've never been to a, a conference or an opportunity like this where we just didn't stop the moment we got off the airplane, and people wanted to hear our story. And, and they know that this is a problem. It is a bipartisan issue, so we have the attention of everyone, no matter whose office that we walked into. And there's a lot of things that are happening, you know, many things are happening in silos, there's committees. But what we're trying to do is push our lawmakers to start working together instead of just individual committees. And it's getting there, and people are listening to us. And so we're starting to kind of branch off on our own now that we're back. And we met with the assistant to the president to talk about this very issue. It's the Assistant to the President for Education. And so talking with her and, and getting more connections, because it is a real problem. Uh, this is something that we know we can get our hands around as far as establishing, establishing some sort of regulation. Um, and as we're doing this, as you know, it just, it seems to be popping up all over every school district. Um, it's all over the country, and it still becomes an issue. And it's, it's more than just education that we can provide in our schools. It's really about getting into and working with the families, about what kids are using, doing with their phones at home, in the evenings, and on weekends. But I just, I just want to thank the board for this opportunity. This was so hands-on and really tangible. And, you know, oftentimes when we go to events and conferences, it's kind of, sort of helpful. And, but this was one of those times where I think we really made a difference, made a name for ourself. And that's honestly the responsibility that we have to our families, to make sure that we're part of a solution here. Um, just a few events, which I'll just go through quickly, with Pyjama Rama, which that is a onesie that I'm in, and it was really comfortable. Um, and so this was all, kind of all in one night, going from the, you, I think we started the, the talent show at Horace Mann, um, which was absolutely incredible to see first, second, and third graders playing Beethoven on a piano. It just shows, as Sophia was mentioning, just the, the quality of talent that we have in our school district. And that was evident at Horace Mann before I took off for Hawthorne. This program at the middle school, I cannot say enough about. This was, uh, we were all choked up watching this performance because this is where it's really come together after reconfiguration. This is where the, the students, this is being modeled after Dana Finley's program at the high school. And Victoria George, who is the, the dance coach for the middle school, is following this, the same pathway. So the, you can see from these pictures, the, the level of the costumes, to the lighting, to the music, to the choreography. Um, you really, if, if you would have attended this event, you would have walked away thinking it was a high school event. That's the quality that we're seeing in our middle school, which is exactly what we've been talking about for years, that when they enter then Dana Finley's program, that they are, that Ms. Finley's not spending all of that time doing foundational, basic choreography. Uh, this was unbelievable to see this show and see this come together. And I can't thank Victoria George enough for the amount of work that she's put in. And, and really, it's the collaboration that I'm seeing from the middle school with the high school, and watching those two coaches, essentially, directors, working together. That's how we're able to get this quality, is because they're working together collaboratively. These are not silos. And to get this quality, that happens, and it's the magic of our teachers that puts that together for our kids, because they raise the bar, and our kids have met that. And, and that's what we saw happen with this dance performance is, is going to happen. It's slow to build, but this is what's going to happen in our middle school. And then just quickly, I also saw, the play was Friday night, and it was just, it was so great to see. And I often sometimes don't like to go to the Saban because it's so big that it oftentimes feels a little vacant because it's this huge, you know, professional theater, and we look like we're just a little spot, you know, on the wall. And to see the number of people that came out for Pirates of Penzance was really reassuring. And I, what I really liked was I met a couple of people, actually three different people, that are, did not have students in our, any of our programs, they're community members. And they have seen, they, they came to Mean Girls, and they were like, this is quality, I want to come back. So we're starting to see the community, and this is what we want, is, you know, how do you, how did you find out about it? How, you know, why are you coming back? And it was pure entertainment. It is arts and culture for sure. We had people from West Hollywood that, that I met, because I knew that there was a lot of unfamiliar faces, so I met a lot of people that night. And that's exactly what we want as well. That, the word is getting out there, the quality of our programming. Elementary Science Fair, hats off to Dustin Seaman, Maggie Mayberry, uh, Maggie Mayberry, and just our, our teaching staff, because they, this is, the, the amount of entries that we had and the students involved has been the highest that we've ever had. The quality has been the highest that we've ever had. If you walked into the, the multipurpose room at Horace Mann, you could just feel the energy. It was contagious. The students were really excited, and it's just a really exciting event. You could just feel it when you walked in. Um, a lot of robotics was there as well, showing off some of the things that they're doing. Um, it was really, it felt like an open house type environment. Um, one event, I'm working with some students, Mr. Ellis is also joining me and Ms. Starkins. We have two students at the high school. They are 10th graders, Cleo Paul and Haley Scholler. They made a proposal to us. Uh, they are president and vice president of the American Cancer Society for the High School, and they would like to do a Relay for Life. And this is something that's known, actually internationally. This is a huge event that not only recognizes the need to fight cancer, but it also celebrates those survivors as well. Um, and there isn't anybody around that doesn't know somebody that hasn't been impacted by cancer. And so this is, it's almost like a, like a street festival that comes to life, and it's a community event. And we have two young, very, they're like stars. They are incredible sophomore students that came to us with a proposal, that have a lot of energy, that want to pull together a district event. And we're meeting, we have our second meeting tomorrow to plan for the 24, 25 school year. And you'll be hearing a lot more about it, but we're really excited. This is a true community event, and we're. This is a true community event, and we're going to build that legacy here in our school district for the first time. So this is going to make some history for us. In May, I'm working on a district state of the, I've got district in there twice, and I apologize. But just a state of the district, where we're at as a school district. And our launch really is, you know, going back now to opening day, and where are we? And the board has done such a good job of really setting that direction for us with our strategic plan, that the May meeting that I share the state of the district with you is going to be where we are as a school district now, where did we start with the summer? But it'll be a nice lead-in to the strategic plan. I know that as a superintendent, I've never had the kind of discussions that we are having now about what our expectations are for student achievement, but as well as culture and safety and student absences and discipline than we've ever had. So I'm really excited to be able to bring that presentation with you as a really nice soft lead-in to the work that we do when we meet with the board in June to talk about our strategic plan. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go around with comments, Ms. Lifson.
No, I mean, you said it best, like, I appreciate the insanely comprehensive report. I love seeing all the events and more district side stuff that either students don't get to see, or I don't get to attend personally. I'm sorry, could I just ask the context of the photo in the last slide of the Real Men Love Taylor Swift shirt?
You missed that.
Yes, you missed that. I just, yeah.
So that was the start of the year. So that was the inner Swifty in me. And so, and that'll be our launch when I talk about the state of the district. But it was, it was a way to kind of bring everybody in for the, you know, the end of the summer and into, you know, it's kind of my own little heiress tour, if you will.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge, and thank you for representing. And Ms. Marcus, thank you for representing at all the events. It's kind of like a We're as Waldo when we do the, oh, there's Rachelle, there's Rachelle. I did want to say, for a little historical context, because I get to do that as the old man on the board, is that in 2012 and 2013, they did do Relay for Life here at El Rodeo. I know, because we were asked, we volunteered and performed, because they had bands playing all day.
Yeah, okay, great.
So we were part of it. Dr. Colt was kind of running it back then, the parent. So I know they did it for two years at El Rodeo, so.
Thank you for that. So this will be the first student run?
Right. So, but it was the same event, it was the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. So it'd be good to bring that back.
Yep, thank you. Now we're excited.
Ms. Minaschery?
Thank you for all of that and for taking the time to participate in all of those and be a leader in those discussions. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Ms. Marcus?
I don't think there's much that I could add to that. I mean, I am looking forward to that cancer relay. I think that is something that's really going to be something sensational, and I look forward to that. And I just have to say that I know that I try to attend as many of the events as possible. I do have more time, and I like to do it. I get the privilege of doing it. To me, it's just a privilege. And I would like to thank you for everything, and I know we get to bump into each other at all these events. I brought it to go to a couple that I couldn't get to, but I look forward to the comprehensive, comprehensive report tonight. It was really great to see everything, so people can see it. But I'm looking forward to the State of the Union, the State of the School, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So glad that you guys went to DC and that we unwittingly got dragged into the whole AI difficulties. And I see very, in short succession, a lot of districts have been facing that as well. But it's great that you guys were able to go to DC. And also, we did publish our, or we did write our resolution to be committed to fighting what is going on and to being aware of the dangers of it. So thank you for your report.
Thank you.
With that, we move on to, can I get a motion for the approval of the 2024?
I make a motion for the approval of the 2024, 2025 agreement for the Civic Center Act use of school facilities.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Marcus, seconded by Mr. Margot. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the revised Prop. 28 Arts and Music Funding Expenditure Plans.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move for the rejection of the claim number 636188.
I'll second. Motion made by Ms. Marcus, seconded by Dr. Stern, myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion for the ratification of the rental agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Saban Theater for the spring musical concerts.
That's, I have a question. I second the motion. My question is, that's for the one that we just completed, is that correct? And that's the 2024?
Yes, correct.
We're not looking at next year, because hopefully, we won't need to. Maybe we'll be able to do it at El Rodeo.
So there's, there's some things that we can do at El Rodeo. It's a pretty small stage, you know, it was built for a K-8. So it's, it's smaller than, it's one of our smallest stages, actually. So there's not a lot of room on sides. And so when you start looking at, like, Dance Company, and like, there's, we're going to have one more year of having to selectively, you know, kind of go out. But we are still using Horseman's Theater and also Beverly Vista Middle School. So it's not, you know, it's, our rental costs are starting to go way down.
That's good to hear.
Good.
I will add, though, along the lines of what Ms. Marcus is saying, is, I understood that the Saban was very valuable in the, because of the size of the wing. It's not necessarily the size of the stage, it's the size of the wings and the size of the sets are the most important reason why they need to do the performances at a theater like the Saban. I would, though, ask, because I don't believe that the bond should just be an ATM. And I would ask that, in thinking about a musical next year, to encourage those in charge to look at the space and say, what can we do here? Right? What will require less wing, maybe more fly, stuff on the flies?
Sure.
That's, that's just how I'd like to put that out there. I understand.
I would second that thought.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to 8B.
I'll make a ratification, move for the ratification of the rental agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Saban Theater for the Beverly Hills High School instrumental music concerts.
I'll second.
Is that, I had to remember that we were able to do that at Beverly Vista on their stage last year for the instrumental music concert. What happened, that it seems to have grown to the bond?
So some of the productions that they're doing are middle school and high school. So they, again, it's impacting the sides of the stage, it's impacting the, but I hear the, you know, loud and clear that we need to look at each individual performance and think, what can we do? Can we design around it? Can we plan around it? And we will do that.
I think it's great that they're doing a thing that includes the middle school and the high school, because that's, of course, exactly what we need to increase our program. So I like that idea. And it's unfortunate that we have to move there to do it. But if it does do what we want it to do, then it might be worth its while.
I agree.
I would, I would just add to that. I don't know how the El Rodeo Auditorium was taken under consideration for this spring concert. I don't think that it was. And I, I'm not supporting this, because I think everybody thought the Saban would be an easy get. And I don't think enough thought and planning went into, can we do this at El Rodeo? One, it would have been wonderful for the community to be exposed to that auditorium and that site sooner than later. And it would have been an opportunity to bring people, if they do it combined with the middle school, which the transmittal does not say, that it's combined performance with the middle school. Is that definitely the case, or are we just?
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, so. Here comes the check writer.
Thank you. So then, yes, so as you know, that's one of my concerns as well, that we're utilizing the spaces that we have. Before we even looked at this, we typically like to bring it to the board before. It's just the timing of the board meetings. But we did check with the high school, I checked with the principal Stewart. We checked with the person in charge. We looked at the dimensions of El Rodeo, and just the bands wouldn't fit in that, in those spaces. We double-checked, they went out there, they looked, and it was a spacing issue. I think they're doing like two sections of items. I don't know exactly the background of it, but when they looked at the sections, they just wouldn't fit.
But the other concerts, they were able to do at BV?
Yes.
So why would they purposely create something that couldn't be held in an existing property? Because that's going to run up more expenditures.
So that's what we discussed with them as well. Like, look, we need to have in the dimensions that would fit into El Rodeo or as well as the middle school. But in this, in this particular situation, they did look into it, and it was already planned a certain way. And when they looked at the different dimensions, it just didn't fit. So I mean, I had them double, triple check before they actually, you know, went into this agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Guzman, I appreciate that. I would, in short of trying to get this board to unanimously give direction to staff, that next year, no more performances at the Saban. We have space now. It's, there are less people that attend all of these performances than that El Rodeo Auditorium can hold. And I know that they say that the, I think what's happened is we've spoiled everybody, right? We saw the bond as an open invitation, we don't have to worry about it. Peters is closed, let's do whatever we want. Let's go to the Wallace, let's go to the Saban, let's do all that. That was before El Rodeo opened, okay? Now we have El Rodeo, so it's time for everybody to, you know, look at, look at their productions coming up next year and say, that you have Horseman, BV, El Rodeo. Those are the spaces for you to work in. Because when they did the fall play, they did it at Horseman, right? They had, that's what they had to work with, they made it work. That had big sets too, by the way. Just they tailored it to that auditorium. So I would hope that in order to stop the spigot that is Measure BH, that we can say, at the administration level, I encourage, I can't give direction, but I encourage to say to all the staff that, that's it. This is the end, this is the end of the Saban, we're not doing it anymore.
I would agree with that.
Okay? One more year, and put your productions at El Rodeo. It's a beautiful auditorium. We have to, for, I mean, I was on that stage, and I'm, and by the way, it's not that I don't believe people, but I totally understand where you can't put Pirates of Penzance, but I don't understand how you can't put an instrumental concert that you had at BV, which is a smaller stage and a smaller attendance area than El Rodeo. That's what I don't understand. So if they have their rationale, I'm not going to argue with anybody. I will support this, because the show must go on. But I have to say, we, this board, no more. We have to stop this, guys.
Let me ask you two questions.
I appreciate that, and just one quick thing with that. I appreciate it. We are, that is something that we are telling them. I think, again, this was something where unfortunately, kind of, the way that the dates of the meetings went, kind of, we would have brought this before. But we will make sure to make that very clear, especially, right now, we're actually meeting with our principals regarding their budgets. So I will make that part of our budget presentations to them, that this is no longer something that's going to be viable.
We've discussed in public before that at some point, we're going to run out of BH funds, right? We're going to have to bridge funding to finish our projects. Everybody here knows that. We have an auditorium open, and yet it's free for all. And we're saying, oh, we can do it with the wall.
Yes.
Please, make sure they understand that. This is, that the end game here is bigger than any of us, right? It's bigger than any of us, it's completing a high school that will affect every, every student in the district. So people have to take that into account.
I will make sure to make that clear. And again, I have these budget meetings coming up, I will make sure to make that part of my agenda.
And it is part of our planning. So like, opening day is at El Rodeo, so like, with all staff. So we are, we are getting into that. We'll make sure that that is at the forefront of our planning.
Yeah, and I got the feeling like El Rodeo was being held for opening for the fall. So maybe that was part of the mindset as well. But I want to be sure that the KO Peters is going to solve all of these problems, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And then some.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's going to be better than Saban.
Yes.
Yes, it's going to be beautiful.
So.
State of the art.
So we made a motion on 8B. It was made by Ms. Marcus and seconded by myself, Dr. Stern. So now I believe we can vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Because I love music.
Yes, got it. Okay, 8C.
Make a motion for the approval of the proposal with KYA for shade structure at TK Patio at Horseman Elementary, using CMAS.
I'll second, I second the motion.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry, thank you. Just because we have recently, first of all, I want to thank everybody for their efforts to not accept Horseman the way that it was. And truly, the way you do anything is the way you do everything. And so the mindset of, let's take Horseman, which is an amazing facility, and let's make it even better and even more custom for our needs. I fully subscribe to that, especially because our elementary schools were built for K through 8, and now we have TK through 5, a lot more younger kids. And so, thank you very much. When this stuff all first came to us last year, we played with it, we pushed back on the gates, and we didn't want to spend money where we didn't think it was necessary. And so, Dr. Bregge, I appreciate you, Will, Raphael, Ken, everybody's time in, in playing with it and making it what the board could get comfortable with, and really meeting the needs of the kids. I just want to make a notation that we've done several things, and we're going to, looks like we're going to do several more investments in Horseman, which is the greenery, the shade structures, the play structure that's coming up. And I really think that there needs to be at least one communication going out to the Horseman community, whether that comes from Mr. Bugby or you, Dr. Bregge. I'll leave that to you folks to determine. But I think that it would be great for the Horseman community to know what's coming up, how beautiful, how more beautiful it's going to look, and that we're really, you know, reinvesting in the children. And so, does any, do any of my colleagues disagree with that suggestion? Dr. Bregge, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I absolutely think that's in order. I think one lesson that we've learned, though, is that we want to make sure that what we're saying is what actually happens. Because, you know, the projects here oftentimes change scope. As, and so I worry sometimes about the communication. Like, if we would have put out earlier, you know, it's changed, it's actually better, I think, overall. And so, but I, communication will absolutely go out. And we've talked about putting that plan in order. We just want to make sure that we don't hit any other obstacles, and we have it out there that we were going to do something, and it wasn't possible.
Great, and I can respect that, and I appreciate your desire for accuracy. So for me, it's not about when and what you say, just so long as the communication goes out and so that the Horseman families have, you know, more to be excited about for the fall, especially as we're moving preschool over, and they might be anticipating, you know, what that impact might be on their operations.
Totally agree, and thank you to the board for support in this project. And also, our Horseman parents that really have handled this so, they've been a model for, really, for any school that's looking at doing some improvements, so thank you.
Agreed, and Mr. Bugby as well. He was, you know, in here the first couple of times, trying to advocate for his community, and that was great.
Okay, so we had, let's see, for 8C, Mr. Margot made a motion, and Ms. Marcus seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So I'll make a motion for the approval of KYA services for the two shade structures over the existing playground, which is 8D. And I'll also make a motion for 8E, the approval of agreement for design services of the preschool play area and shade structure at Horseman. D and E, yeah, because they're both, they're both related to the Horseman shade structures and playgrounds.
I'd just like a clarification on this.
I don't have a second yet, so.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, the shade structure is the one that we're now, while we're talking about. Okay, the shade structure is the one that we're now, what we're talking about is the one next to the auditorium, right?
Correct, correct. The two shades over the existing play structures next to the auditorium.
And the other one we just approved was the one along Hamill, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Mr. Margot made a motion for 8D and 8E, seconded by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Go forth and have shade.
Okay, that's right. All right, moving on to 9A, discussion, filling board vacancy by appointment or special election.
No, it's the JPA liaison.
Almost.
You're almost there.
Where?
We're at 9A.
This is for the liaison?
I must have it wrong.
This is, Mrs. Wells was, joined Mr. Margot as, the title may sound a little confusing when I put JPA liaison there, but we put into place the last few years, the opportunity to have a city liaison in place. And so, even though we've settled our JPA negotiations, we have some ongoing conversations with an early childhood center that I think it would be important for the next six months or so till our next organizational meeting, to have a replacement for Mrs. Wells to join Mr. Margot since those meetings will be coming up. So this would just be a temporary, you know, six month or so liaison to our organizational meeting. And then, of course, that all gets, you know, we look at all of the board responsibilities again. But it's my suggestion that we, since we have these discussions coming up with the city, that we have somebody to join Mr. Margot and myself.
I would be willing to do it if nobody else wants to do it.
When is this? When do these occur?
So it's just when, as needed.
Sparingly.
Yeah, so we have, we've been talking about early childhood with the city. They had their transition as well with Mrs. Wells coming on. So we, they canceled a meeting that we had scheduled for early childhood because their departure of Lily Bossy and Julian Gold. So now that those replacements, they're doing that at the city too, they're going to have to now come up with new liaisons as well.
So it's not necessarily a standing meeting like once a month, it's as needed. Yeah, I'm willing to.
Great point. It is, it's just as needed. And so I would guess that probably in the next six months or so, there may be two or three.
Yeah, I was unwilling as well.
I also would not mind only because of, what I understand from the JPA is the item that's remaining is the use of Hawthorne and for specifically for the early childhood development purposes.
Correct.
And so I'm also a liaison to the Rexon Parks and I just went through the preschool program. And so I would be more than happy to do it because I do feel like I have a lot of input to offer in terms of what the young families are wanting and needing and what would be helpful. I mean, you know, and I understand that others want to do it also. I just think that we will not have two opportunities to do this one because it's really got to make a big bang as the early childhood center comes out.
Right.
And I suppose we can't do it where one of us goes for some of the meetings and then someone goes and it doesn't really, right?
I mean, there's not many left, so.
There's going to be one or two at the most before we organize.
Why don't we see, by suggestion, to see who's available on that particular, and then just take it in the order that?
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, in other words, if the president is available, then she could go if that's a date other than she can't ask someone, you know, someone else, either Judy or myself. I mean, I think that we can, if there's only one or two left between now and then, I don't think that we need, because we will be coming up with a reconfiguration in December, so that would be my suggestion.
That works for me.
Okay, so we just need to stand by for the date?
Sure.
I think that will be the limiting factor.
Find out when it's going to be and then if you're not available, Mandy, as the president, what about us can just step in and do it?
And for what it's worth, I think this is a long-term vision, so I don't even see necessarily within the next few months that there's really going to be anything substantive. Like it's, we're going to get there, but I think that's going to, the long-term vision is going to take a lot more planning, especially with the changeover in the city council.
Sure.
And so I see it more of a long-term position, but I also didn't want it to go unrepresented, you know, I know having Mr. Margot on it is great, but to have that other voice from the board is important, to have somebody there.
Okay, so we'll look to you to tell us when you think or anticipate that the next meeting will be.
Great, we're working on a date now.
I'm fine either way with that, okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to 9B, discussion, filling board vacancy by appointment, special election. Good evening, Mr. Jabari Willis.
Good evening. Let me get myself set up here.
Yeah, I had this one from our meeting, I had this one from our meeting, so. Yeah.
Oh God, it's set up like this, but it's not showing in that setup on.
It's going well.
It's just a little delayed.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's just, there's a delay.
Okay.
That should pop up.
Okay. This is for spring, yeah.
That's where you had it.
That's, yeah.
It's weird.
So, yes, for some reason.
Yeah. Why are we getting? Why is that working?
I guess some questions.
Is it delayed or?
I do have a flash drive, didn't go in here or is no?
Don't answer this, I'll be issued. Don't know why it's. If you want to send it to me, I can. Open that. See, has it flipped? No, it should. It shouldn't be showing at all. It's almost like there's a delay though, because it looks like you should go and sort it out right there. Well, it should be showing what he says, it's not. Why did it just share the screen?
We can email maybe the, for example.
Yeah, if we can put it, if we can put it in Google Slides, it'll probably be a little bit easier. Can I try something? Yeah. Because I do, I do sometimes. Let me just do my screen. It should be good now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Guzman. I think we lost, there is. All right, good evening, board. Dr. Breggy, we find ourselves here again, having this conversation. Today, I'm going to present to you the process for filling a board vacancy. A board vacancy is set forth in Education Code 5090 and a vacancy occurs under three conditions and this is set forth under Government Code Section 1770. They include death, resignation, and a member ceasing to live within the jurisdiction of the school district's boundaries. When you have a vacancy, the governing board must either make a provisional appointment or order a special election to fill the vacancy. And this is according to Education Code Section 5091, subsection A1. There are two important exceptions. If the vacancy occurs within four months of the end of the term for which the position, neither an appointment nor a special election is allowed and the office remains vacant until the election, or the vacancy occurs between 130 days and six months prior to the regularly scheduled election and the office that is vacant is not scheduled to be filled at said election. Then the special election is consolidated with a regular election. Based on the date of Mrs. Wells' resignation, neither of these exceptions apply in this particular circumstance. As you well know, the board has 60 days from the date of the vacancy to either make the provisional appointment or order a special election. If the board fails to take action within 60 days, whether that's, you're unable to select someone for the provisional appointment or you decide not to order an election, the County Superintendent of Schools is required to order a special election. And this is according to Education Code Section 5091, subsection A2. I want to make sure it's clear that if this occurs, the school district would be required to pay for the special election. The cost is not covered by the county superintendent. In the present case here, Ms. Wells filed her resignation on April 1st. As a result, the governing board has until Friday, May 31st, to call for a special election or make a provisional appointment. Again, if you fail to make the appointment or order an election within the 60 days, the county superintendent is required to order an election to fill the vacancy. Now, the unique circumstances for our current situation is as follows. The Election Code Section 1000 sets forth, sets forth the dates that elections may occur. Based on today's date and when the resignation occurred, there is only one remaining election date on the calendar for this year, and it is November 5th, 2024. Mrs. Wells' term was scheduled to end in November of 2024. Therefore, pursuant to Education Code Section 5093, if a special election pursuant to Section 5091 could be consolidated with the next regular election for the board and the vacant position was scheduled to be filled at that election, there shall be no special election. So as you can see here, as the title of this slide is your current situation, you really only have one choice, and that is either to make a provisional appointment or the seat will remain vacant until the regular election in November.
And that is without penalty?
That is without penalty, Dr. Stern. Just technically speaking, if you failed to take action and the county superintendent was required to order a special election, the special election would be scheduled for November, which is the regular election, so it would be referred to as a regular election.
But Jabari, our requirement, we are required to appoint, am I right?
You aren't, you are not required to appoint. You have the choice to either appoint or order a special election. Again, the unique circumstances here is.
No, I mean, based on the circumstances, our only, our only choice is to appoint.
I, I.
Well, because I almost heard that you were almost suggesting, but you also could not, and then wait until the county says something. But our duty is to appoint.
Your duty is to make a decision between the two. Ultimately, it's the board's decision. What I can say is I have had other instances where boards have made the decision to provisionally appoint and then they're unable to have a consensus on the appointment and then it remains vacant. So from a technical standpoint, you can't order a special election, but you could make the decision that you didn't want to appoint anyone and it would remain vacant until November, or you can go through the provisional appointment process.
Thank you, but we could opt.
We could opt for the special election then, as I understand it, in November, consolidating it in November, thus we do not need to make an appointment right now. Am I clear on understanding that? And that the county will not force us to appoint somebody?
Because what, the ultimate result, Mrs. Marcus, would be, the special election that you ordered would be consolidated with the regular election, therefore it wouldn't be considered a special election. The seat was up for reelection in November of this year anyway.
So that's not an additional cost for us?
Correct. You were going to have to pay for the election in November.
I think another point for, just for understanding is that I know after talking to a few people is that the special election isn't, are choosing the date. So that's, that's, it has to be this date. So this date's coming, you know, regardless. So, but I know that some people we've talked to have thought, oh, well, a special election, which by the way is a couple hundred thousand dollars, we wouldn't be able to pick the date anyway, it would be on this date.
There is no other special election date other than that?
Correct.
There are no other election dates left in 2024 besides this date. Now, had the circumstances been different since that this seat had time remaining on it, then you would have the ability to order the special election in November and the person who won the seat would only fill the seat for the remaining time on the term. They wouldn't be elected for another four years. However, since the term is up in November, whoever is elected in November will have the full four years.
A good example is like when Ms. Walker Schuman had left, there was, there was so much time on there that there was, you know, there were other election dates that were coming up.
But if we, but the 60 days would not be necessary if we choose to take the route of the election in November, is that correct? That would now longer apply then?
Which would be the election. The special election, which would be the election.
Yeah, my understanding is all we'd have to do is not act, not appoint, not hold a provisional appointment, and then it would defer to November.
Correct, essentially, yes. That would be the default.
Great.
I got it.
Thank you for that clarification. Are you providing, is this attached to your, to the agenda?
It is not, but it will be something that afterward I will provide to Dr. Breggy and you will, will have a copy of. So let's talk about the provisional appointment since that is.
Is an option.
Is one of your options. And so as it relates to the appointment process, the board has the right to appoint an otherwise eligible candidate to the vacant office, and this is according to Education Code 35107. The individual needs to be 18 years of age and a citizen of the state, a registered voter, not an employee of the district. If an employee of the district wishes to be appointed, they would have to resign before taking office and the individual can't be otherwise disqualified for holding public office. The best practices in terms of the appointment process are to advertise in your local media to solicit candidate applications or nominations. You may also use social media in this day and age. The interviews of potential candidates must occur at a public meeting. Public input must be solicited by the board. And CSBA provides general guidance on the solicitation and interview process, and I have provided the link here for you all to be able to take a look at that. Obviously, the district has been through this recently and so they have the materials ready and prepared as it relates to the solicitation of candidates. There is no specific process identified in the law concerning how potential candidates must be vetted. However, you all do have a bylaw. This is Board Bylaw 9223. With regard to filling vacancies, it indicates that you will accept nominations for board membership at a public meeting and shall select the provisional appointee from among these nominees by a majority vote, which obviously is required by law that the appointment, any action by the board must take place via a majority vote. If someone is selected, the appointee immediately assumes all powers and duties of the governing board member upon appointment and the individual would hold office until the next regularly scheduled governing election. In this particular instance, if you appointed someone, they would hold office until the November 5th, 2020 election. Final portion of this is if a individual is selected. Final portion of this is if a individual is selected, the board is required, within 10 days of the appointment, to post notices of the vacancy and the provisional appointment in three public places in the district, and to publish notice in a newspaper of general circulation that is published within the district boundaries. The notice must state the date of the vacancy, the full name of the appointee, the date of the appointment, and a statement that unless a petition calling for a special election containing a sufficient number of signatures is filed with the county superintendent within 30 days of the appointment, the appointment shall become effective. This is essentially the community's way of indicating that they disagree with the selection. They are given an opportunity to set forth that disagreement. If they are able to have a valid petition, which is to have a certain number of signatures from registered voters submitted within 30 days and verified by the county, the provisional appointment is terminated, and then a special election would be ordered. Obviously, in this case, the appointment would be terminated, and the office would remain vacant until November. Do we have any questions?
I'm just curious, is May 31st the deadline to appoint or to decide to appoint?
It is the deadline to appoint. So that is, you have to take action, whether it is the actual appointment or the ordering of a special election.
Correct.
Well, let's talk about what's coming up, and then we should begin with the end in mind. So what's coming up for us? You know, I feel like we're all now percolating on this opportunity to take the simple way, which I guess would be to not make a decision. So are we feeling as a board, as four of us, and of course, Dr. Bregy, your input is always welcome, that we're not foreseeing something coming up in the next couple of months that would warrant, like, uh-oh, we need a tiebreaker? I'm just asking.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it's always hard to predict that in our world, you know, the 40,000-foot view that we get is that anything can happen, you know, where a board is going to have to make a decision, especially ending the year and then going into a new year. There are employee contracts that are coming up, there's, you know, there are some, there's always, there's never a time where it's insignificant, the work that you do, so, you know, it's hard to say.
So I'll add to that, Judy, that I think that in the past two to three years, I've worked with a board that I have disagreed with quite a few times, and yet, most of our votes are unanimous, because we're working together to build consensus. We can walk into a vote where, for instance, one of the ones tonight, I was dead set against, but I wound up supporting. So, but that's because I was able to get support from my board on directions moving forward. So I think those are opportunities, and I think this board works together very well. We don't have a motion on the floor for C, D, or E, so I can reserve my other comments, but yes, to take the temperature of the room right now, we are one month off of not having had to do anything, one month and three days or something, based on Ms. Wells's letter. So, because that would have fallen in the six-month period. So we're really discussing, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. And so I think, for me, I'm leaning toward letting it go, and we can, the four of us can work this out until November.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with you. In the approximate year and a half that I've been on the board, I think it's been unanimous approvals, and maybe I could count it on my hand for one, a handful of times. We have not really been divided. On the other hand, this meeting is a super light meeting, I would say, as compared to some of the other meetings that we've had, and maybe some of the items that Dr. Bregy is anticipating. So I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not really, you know...
I was interested with the little wrinkle that I got tonight that I didn't know about, and I thought it gave me an opportunity. Here we are at the end of April practically, due to unfortunate circumstances within the scheduling and so on, we really only have 30 days to really go about picking somebody. And we have to advertise, we have to meet, and we have to go through the applications and so on. And I think that in all fairness, to really do it right, we don't have 60 days to do it. So I personally, now that I see that we really don't have to do it, given the constraint of May 31st, that it would be in my interest to probably, and I know that, I don't know, maybe only once or twice that I've overvoted against anything, even if I have, I think that this board, I think we work together fairly well, and I think that we can discuss things out and come to agreements, and see other people's viewpoints. And, for example, right now, tonight, with the issue on the BHF, the suggestion of the tree, we sort of agreed to, we could see the reasoning behind it. So I honestly, I don't want to rush to judgment right now.
Yeah, and I also think that even...
Noah's saying we're all, we're voting on the wrong thing, but I agree. Sometimes we even agree to disagree, and yeah.
And also, I think when, at least speaking personally, when I haven't agreed, or I'm leaning in one direction, but I speak to one of the three of you, I find all very smart and gifted in certain and different areas, my thinking actually is able to change. And I'm glad that at 52, I'm still able to change my thoughts and definitely grow from your perspectives. I also tend to agree, Rochelle, that it's almost giving short shrift to do all the labor that's involved in such a course, a short course of time. We're not even considering the work that goes involved to these poor people who are showing up to sing for their supper, so to speak. And also, you know, I've learned, and it sounds like a very cheesy aphorism, I think it's an aphorism. Sophia, tell me if this is an aphorism or a maxim, or, I don't know. But, you know, I want to do what is best for the children. That's not an aphorism, I don't know. But, so in that, thinking of that, if we were to commit ourselves to this task of selecting a valuable player in the, you know, within a short amount of time, that's a lot of labor that is away from these very exciting things that are coming up with graduation, things like that. So is it in the best interest of our kids? Probably, probably not. So I tend to agree with what you guys have said, which is that it's giving short shrift to a very important appointment, so.
Yeah, that was a very good point, Mrs. Marcus, because in thinking of what Dr. Bregy was saying about the end of the year calendar, not to mention how much labor this is going to put on staff to go through this process, but for us to give up time now, which we're going to have to be at events like the Coffee House, which is going on right over our heads, we are going to lose that valuable time, and we do want to attend these events and support our students. So I do appreciate that comment, Rochelle.
And you can see that the way that we've even had to front-load this agenda, do you know what I mean? Like, assuming if you were going for a provisional appointment, that's where the resolution, so we had to front-load that because of the 60 days. So that would be something that, you know, if, depending on the board direction there, that we would just pull off.
So we have to then get a different resolution for the next meeting, so that we would say that that's what we're going to do, or as well...
I think we don't act, Mrs. Marcus.
Right, yeah. If you take no action, then at that point, again, from a technical standpoint, it would fall to the county superintendent to order a special election.
Which would be November.
Which would be November, when the regular election is set forth.
But procedurally, is there something we need to do? Like, I just don't want to get slapped some fine because we didn't do some letter or some... procedurally, operationally?
No, because the way it's set up is that if you fail to act, that's what occurs. And so...
How does that come to the attention of, say, the powers that be?
You would, you are required to inform them of either an appointment or your decision...
That's what I need to know, and when...
But by not informing them of a provisional appointment or ordering a special election, they will know we have not acted.
Correct.
Yes, yes, they'll know. And trust, they're paying attention to what's going on right now, so.
But...
We're not going to fool them, you know?
Electing for a special election, which then falls with the general election, is not an option, so that we are actually fulfilling the requirement?
No, because again, pursuant to the 5093, if the regular, if the special election can be consolidated with the regular election, and the seat was going to be up for the regular election, there is no special election. It is considered to be a regular election. I don't see...
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do understand. So I can talk with Dr. Bregy and staff about just providing a notice to the county to say that this is what the board has decided to do. In essence, they would go forward with allowing it to be vacant until the November election.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
And then for the other items on our agenda right now, because we've approved the agenda, technically, do we have to defeat these, or just we don't have to?
No, so what I would recommend is basically you can call those items, and just don't have a second, and so then the...
They'll die.
The motion dies, and then you don't have to take action.
And Jabari, I just want to be 100% sure, there's no liability for the district in taking this approach, right? It's simply...
Right, yeah, there's no penalty. You all have, it's your decision as to whether or not appoint, order a special election, or take no action and allow the county superintendent to order a special election. The penalty in a regular set of circumstances would be, you would be required to pay for the special election.
Which is why, when we had the vacancy prior, and there was a long enough time between the next election, we had to do an appointment, because otherwise, we would have had to pay for a special election. And that was one of the things that drove us to make that decision at that time, because we didn't want to incur the cost.
Correct, because remember, when you have a standalone election, you are not sharing the cost with any other public entity?
So if you can, if you're confirming in that case that the county would not come back and say, hey, you gotta hold a special election, that's a sure thing?
Again, even if they ordered a special election, it would not be until November, and considering the seat is up in November, per that particular code section, if it can be consolidated, it's not considered a special election.
Thank you.
Okay, in order to move this along, I will move for the approval of the filing of the board vacancy by appointment or special election.
And we don't second, unless someone wants to. Okay, so with that, can we move to communication?
You can say, you can say, the motion dies for lack of a second.
The motion dies.
The motion dies. The motion dies for...
I move for the approval of Resolution 2023-2024-014, Resolution for the Appointment of a Provisional Board Member to Fill a Vacancy of the Governing Board.
Oh, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-24-15, Resolution Establishing Procedure for the Appointment of a Provisional Board Member.
And again, the motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, moving along to communication from the board members. Ms. Lipson? Okay, yeah, you did. Mr. Margot?
Just briefly, because I know we have to cut out here to our other stuff.
Yes.
I appreciated, Dr. Stern, what you said earlier about the art shows. I think that's very important for people to remember about art, and we are all, we have been on hypersensitivity since October 7th, but we can't, as a democracy and a free country, and where we respect the point of art, we have to, we have to let these things go. If we're angry, then the art did its job, so...
There's uncomfortable things that we all confront, and artists are often charged with making us think about those things.
Making us think and making us feel and making us emote. So I appreciate what you said about that. Briefly, I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting last week, gave a report, and whenever I even speak about that, I feel like Ms. Krausauer is like staring down at me. Then I will announce that they are looking at doing, there's a proposal coming back to them about something called no hate zones in the city, so I think that's something that we are going to get somehow on board with if that happens, because schools should obviously be no hate zones as well. So we'll see how that plays out, but I think that'll wind up coming back to us in some form.
Thank you. I wanted to share that I, this dates back to pre-spring break, attended the amazing, yet again amazing, Career Day at the high school, and I'd like to thank everybody who participated in that, and Dr. Seaman, you and your team for that heavy lift. It was amazing, it was so fun, and actually, I bumped into a friend who was there speaking as an attorney that day, and she shared with me that she ended up hiring three of our students for the summer as interns. And the look of sheer excitement on her face, an attorney that's now been practicing almost 20 years, you know, she was so enthused and excited to be able to offer this to three of our young ladies who went up to her afterwards, and so that's really what it's all about. I heard that our students were incredibly engaged, and that the speakers really loved getting to know our students, and so I just commend our students. Thank you, guys, for being who you are, and thank you to our community for stepping up, and it just seems like it's growing and growing. To that vein, I also had the pleasure of attending, I guess it was called the CTA Pathway Breakfast, last Wednesday morning, which was truly lovely, and we had, as you shared, representatives from our speech program, am I saying it's our speech program? And he was so passionate, and he was so in tune with his students. That's just one example, and we had all the folks from the hotel industry who've supported our new programming, and Cindy Dubin, and I hate to mention names, because I know there is names that I'm missing, but it was truly incredible, and to see the connection that the students have with the workforce out there, and to hear them speaking and be inspired of, and I've decided I'm going to do X as my career, as a result of having those experiences, is what it was all about. And so I thank you, I thank you so much for setting up this vision and being the architect for all the kids to have different things, not everybody is the same way, and you could just see the diversity. Again, Sophia, as you said, it was every type of student, every type of experience, and I loved it, and I thank you for that.
In the interest of time, I'm going to try to be very, very quick. I attended the CBOC meeting last week. They are working on getting their report of the audit out to us sometime in, they're going to present it to themselves in May and get it to us before the end of the year, the fiscal year. The other, I attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting. I would love to tell you that the chair of the committee had heard about a program that was done by one of our students in the MSA program, the Medical School of Medical, and he brought it to the Academy, Medical Science Academy, and he brought his program to them, and they really loved hearing about it. And so ding, 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 a brain went off in my mind, why not do another one? And so I approached Colleen Lynch, the teacher of the program, and we are bringing another student to them at their next meeting, so they really enjoyed that, and seeing what the, and these are their end-of-year projects, and we have another student coming in May, and I'll let you know about that. They also talked about the Health Practitioner Program, which was wonderful. I myself have been a Pearson who has used it, not personally, but for my husband, and I have to tell you, that's the most incredible program anywhere in this country. They don't, I don't know how many cities even have a program like that, if any do, and we should be so proud of that program for our citizens in Beverly Hills. And so I'm going to make my, very brief, I'm looking forward tomorrow night to the Cabaret, which I love to attend every year, and I want to wish everybody, what remains of Passover, a hugsomea, and thank you.
Nothing really to comment on. I've enjoyed the start of spring, and things are going well, looking forward to the Cabaret as well tomorrow, trying to go, and I'm also looking forward to the annual carnival, which will be happening at, happening at Horseman this year, I believe, in March 3rd, a week from this Friday. May 3rd, sorry, May 3rd. May 3rd, sorry, May 3rd. Okay, yeah, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
And into closed meetings.
We're gonna move, go to another room, aren't we?
Yeah, we're gonna be in Room 104, so we'll just go right on.
Wait, 104 is the next...